I'll be it, gentlemen. Gimme just a second, folks. About good?
Yep.
Okay, we are now reconvening into regular session. No action was taken during the executive session.
Seven thirty-six.
Got it. Our time is seven thirty-six. Anyone care to take action from the executive session?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor and city staff to negotiate hiring a city administrator for up to $120,000 per year and a two-year contract to be reviewed by council prior to final approval.
Okay, we have a motion as stated for the mayor to... Repeat that again. Everybody did this. There's a lot of words there. In essence, for the mayor to negotiate with an applicant with a maximum salary of $120,000 and a two-year contract.
Yes.
Got it? All right. Discussion. Okay, we have discussion from Mike?
Now, second that.
I mean, second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I now call the second part of the meeting to order, which goes by the agenda. Item number two, discuss and consider request by Scott Greco regarding outstanding invoice from Harrells. I do not see Scott here.
He told us last week he wouldn't be. He said he couldn't be here this week.
Well, I didn't take it that way, but has he sent any information that was requested?
He said he wouldn't be able to be here because he travels from work and he wouldn't be here. He actually said that during the meeting.
The mic a little closer to your...
He's not here because he's at work.
Okay, and no one's here on his behalf?
I'm sorry?
No one's here on his behalf?
I guess he felt the council decide what they were going to decide after last week.
Okay, well, that being said, it's kind of a shame because we were swamped with all kinds of papers and everything right before the agenda item, not even at the beginning of the meeting. So there was time needed to research and find out things. Even though supposedly the information was already there 30 to 45 days before, council never got anything. So how can we make a determination with five minutes to look at a bunch of papers?
Dora, was anybody able to turn into the city or find any evidence of Rob directing him to leave those chemicals behind?
Oops. Yes, I did. I got with the mayor. Can you hear me?
I'll take that right.
He did, just not in my ear.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I got with the...
You need to hear yourself a little bit.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, I got with the mayor. I listened to the tape. It was the one for, I believe it was February... I have it right there. It was February the 8th when Scott turned his resignation in. And so it was... I was not at this meeting, that's why I was drawing a blank. I was out sick. So Denise did it in my place as well as Alma she was here. So I listened to it. There's two times that I heard where Rob was talking. Cory asked him, "Rob, this is going to fall under you or you're going to have enough manpower?" Rob says, "No." Because at the very beginning Cory says, you know, all they want to focus on is just the very minimum as far as the grounds. They weren't looking at opening the clubhouse or anything like that, just the minimal that needed to be done on the grounds.
Just real quick, you're referring to when the city taking over the job.
Right, after Scott turned in his resignation. So at that meeting, Rob did let the mayor and council know that, no, he would have to, he didn't have enough manpower, so he would at least like to keep two. I believe one of them was Nick, but I don't know who the other person was. He didn't mention it. It wasn't mentioned at the meeting. So that, and then the next time Cory asked Rob, "Okay, what are you going to do if we spray the wells?" Rob said, "Depending on the severity, we may have to have, they may be able to fix it in-house or they may have to sub it out." That was the only thing that Rob spoke on. You came to the podium, you were not on council at that time, you came to the podium and when they started, when they were talking about it, you did mention about, you know, for them, because they were talking about the money for the monthly cost of like $20,000 to keep the minimum on the grounds. You said that they may want to think about, you know, increasing that to be able to do an assessment and inventory in the event that they wanted to sell it. You did mention that. When you finished saying that Cory did ask if anybody had anything and then after that he moved on. So I called Rob after listening to that and I asked him, I said, "Rob, just to jog his memory to see if he would remember anything." And he says, "Dora," he says, "I'm not saying that Scott is not saying that, you know, saying the truth." He's like, "But if you're asking me, I don't remember." He says, "But I will tell you that you know that after council meetings, it is not uncommon for the council or people in the audience to come up to me or before me with ism, you know, now it's Pete, you know, for things to get done, not necessarily when the tapes are going, you know, when the live stream is going." He says, "Things like that." So I'm not saying it didn't happen. He's like, "If Denise remembers, Alma remembers." He's like, "And you said Debbie remembered, I can't remember." So if you want me to sign something, I said, "Well, no, I'm just asking if you remember." He says, "I don't." He says, "But I will tell you that if a high amount would have been told to me," he's like, "I would have said something." So that, there was nothing on the tape and that's the conversation that I had with Rob. He's like, "Dora, I just can't remember." He's like, "But it's not, again, it's not uncommon for things to happen after council meetings."
Okay. Thank you.
And then I went back after the 8th thinking, okay, well, maybe, you know, it happened, maybe there was a meeting after that, you know, where, but the next meeting after February 8th was February the 15th, which was at the DSAC, if y'all remember. Yeah, that, and that's it.
So just to refresh from a week ago, it was stated here that council had mentioned allowing them to, in other words, saying that the city would take the chemicals. Okay? Correct?
That saying what?
A week ago, it was mentioned that council discussed leaving the chemicals on the property.
I don't, I don't think he said, the council said that. I believe the verbiage was that Rob directed him to leave the chemicals behind and that the city would take it over.
Actually, I, it was both.
Oh, it was?
Yeah. It was both. It said, it said it was talked about at council.
Okay, okay.
Okay. That's what I remember. I reviewed the film again also just to make sure.
When I talked to Rob, I did ask him and he's like, "Dora," he says, "if Scott asked me if I wanted to use the chemicals since we were taking over for the shorter time that we were going to take over," he's like, "Why would I not want to use the chemicals and have to spend more money to get them?" He's like, "But as far as the quantity," he said, "I did not know how much and the quantity."
Well, I'm really glad to hear that our city staff isn't acting outside their bounds there and accepting extra debt on, without council approval, so at least we got that policy down.
So anyway, just to bring council up to date on this, what I've checked on, I spoke with Justin White, who's the representative from Harrells. He was present at, he's the one that's always dealt with SG Golf Management and that was, it was always through Nick Miller, who was the superintendent of SG Golf Management. And then he also became the superintendent of the Divine Golf Group, all right? First things first, the inventory that was returned to Harrells was a perfect match with the inventory that was taken here with Debbie and SG and so forth, taking notes, aside from one gallon that was damaged, so they wouldn't take it back.
That was the difference in the price?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Right, okay.
It had to be something because...
So that part's great, okay? So all of that was returned and he accepted and he has credited Scott's account with that money, okay? Now, while I was talking with Justin White, with regards to the inventory, he said all the Harrells product was in one shed. Okay, I don't know if it was moved there or if it ended up there for convenience. Okay, it was there all along? And is this the shed that had the lock that couldn't be opened? Okay, so you had to get a bolt cutter. So all the Harrells product was in that shed? Okay. Now, like I said, I had questions about a letter that Nick Miller had sent to council. Everybody should have gotten this several weeks ago. Did you hand out the copies?
I got one from David, right?
Okay. There's one from Nick, two days after David's with reference to the chemicals and the water situation. Thank you. I got one. So as you read this, like I said before, Jay was the superintendent for SG and then also Divine Golf Group. He was dismissed, I believe, in August of 2022 by Divine Golf Group. And accordance to Justin White, that's who he always dealt with. He said that all the dealings, so my first question was, why was he asking so much about, you know, payment and this, that and what have you? And Justin did confirm that, that that was, those conversations were exchanged between them. And also during that time, Nick told Harrells, Nick Miller told Justin White with Harrells that the city would pay for the chemical to be used in the spring. However, he said he has never spoken with anyone from the Divine Golf Group other than Nick Miller, perhaps either when he was with SG or Divine Golf Group. So he's never spoken to Ron, he's never spoken to Otter, Jay and so forth. However, he has spoken to Aubrey, who works at the golf course, but that wasn't until just a little while back when they were trying to coordinate and then picking up the inventory. Okay? So that being said, he was never told that the DGG would be paying for anything other than, the only one that was mentioned that Justin told me was the city. All right, now, back to the city. And that's all I can talk about and to me, in my honest opinion, and if council disagrees, so be it. The rest of it, if it doesn't involve the city using the chemical, is an issue between the two independent contractors. Okay, that's, that's my take. We don't have any dominion over either one of them on what they buy, how they use it, what they do and so forth. We don't have any dominion over how they spend their money. Right, and this goes on. Okay? So that would bring me to the chemical that, although I do have a couple, I do have one big question. Debbie, you did the spreadsheet. If all the totals are right where it says sprayed?
I'm sorry?
Okay, all right, on your spreadsheet and then, right, and then the records you got from Nick Miller? Okay, you said Nick Miller gave you the records, right?
That's what Scott gave all of us in August, the spray records, yes.
Right, right, well, but, okay, my first question is, how did he keep his records?
He has a log, I would assume, by his license requiring it.
So we were given your spreadsheet of the records, but not his records?
I didn't bring it with me, what we were given in August. It was a kind of spreadsheet.
Right, that's what Scott said last week.
That Nick had given him. So instead of handing us his log book, he wrote it out on a spreadsheet for us.
Gotcha, so he did keep a log book?
I'm sorry?
He did keep a log book?
Yes, by his, from what I understand, their license requires them to.
Well, actually, actually what the law was before then was that that book is to never leave the premises.
The person who obtains the license has to keep the log?
Well, not if they're an employee.
I'm just telling you what I've been told.
That's why...
I can only go by that.
I understand.
Because he still has the license and the log books with him wherever he is now.
Yeah, okay. So that would have been a big help for everything if that, if that log book was, was on the property. So, but the law was that the records stay on the property, that's what the law was. However, that law referred to restricted chemicals and from what I understand, none of these chemicals are restricted. But it's still commonplace that the chemical records of spraying and such for obvious reasons are kept on the premises. Now, the new law is that they stay with the person who sprayed, the licensee, okay? However, that, what I was told, okay, now I'm sure there could be exceptions and such and I'm just, this is just informational. From what I was told, that refers to, for example, if you have an outside person come in and spray your product for you and such, not if you're an employee. So that could have solved a whole lot of this problem if those spray records were there because basically what we have, we're given a spreadsheet and we're supposed to assume this is gospel. Okay, that's all we have to go on is the city council, all right? We don't have day-to-day sheets, we don't have mileage books that, you know, that you would keep for taxes or anything like that. Okay? So my question, we have all these totals here of $30,000, Harrells invoice total of $30,762, okay? Plus a few, some change. And Divine, City of Divine total, $4183, Divine Golf Group total, almost $12,000, okay? Spray total, inventory to return, okay? And this matches the Harrells invoice total. So are we to assume that when, by the time Nick Miller left in August of 2022, that all the chemical that Scott had purchased was sprayed during that time? So...
Except for what was left when we did it with Cory?
Well, I know, but that's in your, that's in the summary at the end.
Yeah.
Inventory's included. Okay, so it's all accounted for. So you have inventory, all right, returned inventory, okay? The city's total, right? And then every other penny shows that it was sprayed by Divine Golf Group that he had purchased.
Correct.
Isn't that a little coincidental?
No, because that's how long he was employed there.
Yeah, but it wasn't...
They actually said during one of the meetings, it might have been in August, I don't know if it was, I don't know which one of them said it, that they didn't know it was there. Later they changed that, but they said, "We didn't use that product after Nick left."
Right.
So that's why everything's added up, because they didn't use it after Nick left.
Right. Well, the point I'm making is that no one can really prove that they sprayed his chemical because of the way this was compiled. So it's extremely coincidental that the spray logs would match to the penny, okay, of what was left in that car shed. There would be variance, there would have to be. So that's why I say, gosh, it should be nice to see the actual spray logs.
Hey, Dora, is the current organization submitting spray logs with their documentation? If not, please request that they do that moving forward so we don't ever have to run across this issue ever again. Just a copy or something like that. Thankfully, it's not an issue right now, but boy, I don't want it ever to be an issue ever again.
Pete will get with them and get a copy and we'll start pulling on it.
Appreciate it.
It just turned out to coincide with the existing inventory and everything else I found out to be, you know, just, just hard to comprehend.
To your point, Mayor, I, interesting, I concur. After a quick breeze through here, you missed the dot com, my email, which is why I didn't get it. But a quick breeze through, it does look very emotionally charged, so to me, that reduces the credibility of some of the alleged facts in here. And that is the only thing we have of, as far as information to go off of here. And we still haven't found anything where the city employee directed them to leave that behind and the council didn't. What's the, what are you folks' opinions here?
Okay, I was gonna, I was gonna get into that and I'm gonna throw this out there, okay? I don't see how anything at all can be proven on this issue. However, okay, and I said this too. When the city took the golf course over at the beginning of March, all right, my experience as a landscaper and such, and I mentioned it at last week's meeting, and this will be for council to decide, I can honestly say that it was pertinent that that chemical gets sprayed at that time. Very time-related, it's a pre-emergent chemical. If you wait too long, it will be zero effective, okay? Or not as effective to want to accomplish the job it was supposed to do, all right? And if you don't know what pre-emergent herbicide is, it generally prevents the weeds from germinating, right, and becoming a nuisance. Okay? If you wait too long, they're already germinated and there's nothing you can do once that happens, especially on golf course greens, all right? So I will say that. So, for example, Nick says in his letter, he said, let me see. I'll just read it word for word. "With regards to the Harrells early order program, during the time after SG terminated their lease agreement, it was brought up at city council, unsure of which one in parentheses, that all fertilizer and chemicals will be kept by the city to retain for further use until and if after another management company were to take over the course." That's very alleged. I don't see anything that confirms that. I did confirm with Debbie Randall as well as Rob Flores, so I could get the pre-emerge out in the window, it needs to be done to be effective. So that is what I just said. It did need to get put out to be effective. So I, even if, you know, it would be very logical for him to approach Rob with the city and say, "Hey, we got to spray this now. That I'll give you." Okay? And then he said, "With that being said, I made multiple spray applications during the time that it had to be applied." I had, I have the spray records, but I do believe Scott Greco provided council with a copy and I assume he's referring to this. Okay, so that's, that's pretty much it with regards to the city. He actually goes on to, in other words, to basically state that the city didn't agree to take the remainder of the chemical, just the stuff that needed to be sprayed at that time until someone else could take over. So basically what we're talking about here is about $4,000 minus the sales tax, you know, I didn't, I didn't probably see it's...
Thirty-eight, sixty-four, sixty-six?
Yes, ma'am. Okay? So that's what he says he sprayed. I will say that the pre-emergent spectacle is extremely expensive, but also very effective. And the coastal, you know, it's pretty standard, pre-emergent. But the spectacle is extremely expensive and I believe that would answer your question about the expense during that small frame, you know, small window of spraying chemical, okay? We haven't proved that that's what was exactly sprayed for the city, but I can say that something would have to have been sprayed and in order to do so, the city would have had to go and purchase it somewhere. So it would make sense, it's, it's on the property, that the city sprayed was on the property as a pre-emergent.
It almost sounds like there's some culpability on the city's part here. My concern is this reminds me of a scam in a third world nation where someone comes up that, or you enter a bar, whatever, they give you a drink, drink up, drink up, and then, "Oh yeah, by the way, you also owe me $20. If you don't, I'm calling the cops." This, because I can't find anywhere where anyone's agreeing to accept this in exchange for the bill that's attached to it. I'm not seeing any note of the amount of money that would be owed. And so this would be like us allowing that $36,000 of fertilizer in the inventory to be taken by SG and then say, "Oh yeah, by the way, you need to compensate us for all that fertilizer you used." If we're not clear and transparent with this, that's just a hustle and that is not good ethics, so I'm really not feeling good about this.
I'm just throwing that out there as, to try and be in the middle, so forth, kind of, kind of inform council of everything that's there. I did say last week that if it was discussed in council, obviously there's no minutes, there's no action that was taken, there was no motions made, nothing. That's for you guys to decide.
To be honest with you, that was a contract between Scott and the Harrells. I don't think it has anything to do with the city Divine or the other organization. I mean, Scott had a contract with the city and he knew he had a contract with Harold. Why didn't he just take the chemicals back and says, "Hey, credit me the money," instead of just leaving it behind? You don't leave money behind, that's money that he could have had. I mean, here we got $32,000 a month. Why didn't he pay the whole bill off and then take that material back and got a refund? I mean, I understand.
That was something I also verified with Justin here. Harrells would have gladly taken it back at that time. And restocking fees were mentioned. Justin White said they don't have restocking fees. But he said they would have taken the chemical back when Scott turned in his keys if they had been requested to do so. He did tell me that.
It'd be like a gift if somebody else would have used it, to be honest with you.
You said that Denise remembers this conversation happening? Denise and Alma. You remember it being said? Just kind of from my point of view, this sounds like an unfortunate miscommunication. I don't, not knowing these people personally, I don't know that there was any sort of malicious intent on it. It sounds like there was just not a realization of exactly how much money worth of chemicals there was in their possession at the time. I mean, if, you know, if Debbie and Denise and Alma all say, "Hey, I remember having this conversation," I mean, those are people that I respect and trust. I think, I mean, don't get me wrong, I don't want to pay for this. This sucks, no matter, you know, however this ends up, it's going to suck for someone. But I think just, I think there was just kind of a breakdown of information being passed along here. I mean, I believe them when they, when they say they remember this conversation happening and it's going to suck. They do that if that's what it comes down to, but that's what it sounds like happened.
Yeah, because if I was Scott, I would have took Rob straight to Harrells and say, "Hey, let's put this contract in the city's name or done something with Dora," you know what I'm saying? That's what I would have done.
I agree, but, you know, it was also a very contentious time as well. It could have just been, you know...
I think that part just got, that ball got dropped.
Not on our part.
Well...
Not on councils maybe, but still...
Yeah, but he's the sole responsible person for it, that's...
I understand what you're saying, but I also think he left it for us so that, I mean, knowing we would pay for it because he left it for us. Now, I don't think there was any, I don't think anybody even talked about the money at that point.
No, because Denise did say, her being, you know, the accountant, she did tell me, she's like, "Dora, if at night, if it didn't happen, if it didn't happen after," or they talked... talked, you know, Scott, you know, we were all, you know, packing up and we were all talking, she's like, "If they would have said 40,000," she's like, "I would have called you out of your house before I would have called you because that meant that I knew what you were gonna say is that it needs to go back to council."
Alma, did you say you remembered also?
Everybody did.
Do you remember where it was said or spoken?
I'm sure it was somewhere around here where we're always picking that.
But no, no, money was not mentioned again.
I mean, we know the rules, everything above a certain amount has to go to council.
Okay.
So he took, Scott took over the golf course in what year?
January 2020.
So these are payment records that he made, correct? On this sheet transaction by customer required report receivable management. There's got check numbers on there and the payments that he made, correct?
Yes.
One thousand three fifteen on nine, okay, that's, hold on, 2020. So nine eleven, 2020, he made a payment for two fifty-nine, sixty-seven, ten eight, twenty-two, five sixty-four, seventy-two, ten twenty, twenty-two, four thousand one fifty and thirty-one cents, ten twenty-six, 2020, three hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy cents, seven twelve, 2022, one seventy-six, oh eight.
Those are credits.
Are you looking at the transaction history, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, so these are credits?
It's the, they're not being given from Harrows.
It's gonna tell you the question. Yeah. First, you get all the invoices, and then if you start going on the other pages, this is like, then you'll see the finance charge, F I N, that's gonna be, if you look to your right.
Okay.
And then if you, there's all a bunch of finance charges, and then you start going right here, Tom, right here with those credits, and then the invoice charge.
These credits?
Yes.
So that's credits?
Yeah. I understand. So if you look here, these are all, you start with your credit and these start with your payments. And at the very beginning, these were all the invoices.
So this is all the payments they made up to...
Mm-hmm. And in fact, in fact, there's one payment that we did that has our check number that the city paid, I think when we took over. There was only one payment, 'cause I think when Ruben Chapo was running it, he didn't use Harold's.
Oh, that was one company.
Yeah, he used somebody, some other company, I forgot what the company's name was.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, basically, we know this seven thousand seven twenty-nine would be dropped if we, if it gets paid in full. The finance charges?
Yeah, he told us that last week.
So, it goes from thirty to thirty-seven, it's really thirty-seven thousand, but Harrows had said they wouldn't charge us for those if we all paid.
Tom, question for you. Under Texas Penal Code Title VII, Chapter 32, Subchapter A, so thirty-two dot, I guess, zero one, essentially it's illegal to sell somebody something without disclosing a lien against it. Would this not constitute that? Essentially, giving it to us without the disclosure of the bills due.
I'd have to look at it, Josh. What, give me the citation again.
Texas Penal Code Title VII, Chapter 32.
Thirty-two what?
Dot zero one. I can send you a link to it.
Oh, I can hear it real quick.
Okay.
You guys go ahead and continue, it's gonna take a while.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not double dipping on a lie here or against it.
May I ask them a question on the chemicals, on how they buy theirs, how they...
Of course, as long as, just...
Who purchased the chemicals for y'all? Or where do y'all go get y'all's chemicals? Do y'all go through Harrows or do y'all go somewhere else?
Talina.
Talina, how do you purchase them? 'Cause I think he said he purchased it in a bulk, or...
With a credit card, and I load a pallet of it in the back of my truck, and I bring it back here. Matter of fact, they said, "Oh yeah, your truck'll handle it, but boy, if it hits..."
So you bought it all in bulk, and this was a contract?
No.
As you need it.
As you need it, and they bought it as a bulk?
So that's not uncommon in a lot of businesses, your work stuff, would they intend to pay it later after you make some revenue and cover that?
That's a very common program in, right in this type of business. And Justin White also confirmed that. They do it for several reasons, right, but they do it with a lot of people, not just here. The other, the other thing too is that I don't doubt that it may have been spoken here and there, okay, like we do sometimes when we're at recess or we walk out the building or what have you, but, you know, SG was here for two years, over two years. They too know how the system works. They know that, you know, you gotta have approval by city council when money is spent. Just want everybody to remember that also, and I don't, and I'm not trying to go one way or the other, I'm trying to be as straightforward as I possibly can be.
I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily a fair characterization, I don't want to stir up too much drama, but pretty much anything I asked for before or after they got, so I'm sure, I'm sure there was an expectation that regardless, it would just be taken care of. I mean, hence in Nick's letter here, all he did was, he asked Debbie and he asked Rob, he didn't ask Dora, he didn't go in front of council, just because it was the expectation.
I was kind of referring more to the entire balance of everything.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm sure they just, please take this, some will pay us back later.
Yeah, and the amount of the money.
Right, without, that's why I think they had to mention it, just, it'll get taken care of. It's not saying I endorse or like that behavior, just that was the tone.
Understood. Did you guys wish to speak for the record this evening? I noticed you didn't really check the box to speak.
Yeah, I'd like to say something on this topic.
If you do, it's completely up to you, it's for the record, okay?
So... There we go. Hello? There. All right, my name is Brian Navarro, 104 Sonic Drive. I guess, you know, I just want to bring up, so, we never had a contract with SG Management. We're talking about this literally nineteen, twenty months after we took over. Again, it came up because we brought it up, we brought up in a spreadsheet that there was chemicals, or SG, there was an open invoice from Harrows that SG hadn't taken care of. Twenty months later, he still hadn't taken care of it. He hadn't even asked about it, he didn't ask any of you guys about it. Right? So it came up because we saw an open invoice. Second, Nick Miller, he didn't have a spray license when he worked for us. Third, when we took over, the week after we took over, there was a fire at Mr. Grego's house, they used our spray rig to go over there, help put the fire out, they damaged some parts on it. So that spray rig was down from a week after we took over to May 6th. Could not have sprayed, didn't have a spray rig.
That's interesting.
Exactly.
Can you give me that citation again?
I think that the fire was the week after we took over, so it'd have been, I think it was around March 23rd. We didn't have, the spray rig wasn't available until May 6th.
And it's because they damaged it using it to put out a fire at Scott or David's house?
Yes.
Which one?
It was David Grego's house. Nick Miller took our spray unit, there was a fire over there, came to the course, got the spray unit, drove it over there to help put out the fire. In doing so, the spray rig, some of the bottom caught fire and it damaged some of it. We had to pay $2,500 to get that spray rig back up and operational.
Fire department was called as well, and they...
So the fire department had records?
Yeah.
Which house was it at?
That's, that was at the house across number six T-Box.
Okay.
So, you know, again, we didn't have a contract with SG Management to take over any chemicals. Scott, back then when we took over, he gave us a list of things that he asked if we wanted to buy. And we did, we bought a few things, I think it was a total of $8,000. The chemicals are not on that list at all. That's the only place, I think, if he would have had, if he would have come to us and said, "Hey, do you want to buy these chemicals?" We probably, I doubt we would have bought them for $30,000. But the superintendent we had after Nick Miller was released, and he was released because he wasn't putting any chemicals on the golf course. Jay has a text from Nick Miller that he sprayed a chemical on April 29th, and it's not even a chemical that's on the list for Harrows. That's the only record, that's the only thing we have that he sprayed.
And lighting.
So, and again, you know, as I bring up, this is twenty months later, twenty months later we're talking about it. Just this past March, Texas Golf Association, we have a GEN system, they locked us out because a bill wasn't paid.
Oh, wow.
It's called GEN, it's a handicapping system for golf.
Oh, cash for the score and stuff.
It's run by Texas Golf Association. March this year, they locked us out because a bill wasn't paid for 2020 or 2021. They wouldn't accept a payment, our payment for 2022, they wanted a whole payment. So to this day, that bill still hasn't been paid by SG Management. We paid our part in 2022 and move forward. In April of this year, we get a call from Yamaha, they took $5,700 out of our account because taxes, county taxes were not paid on the Yamaha golf carts for 2020 and 2021. I notified, I notified Scott Grego, he went down, I guess he paid them, I don't have a, you know, he said he texted us all back, said he took care of it, it's done. Three weeks ago, we get another deal from Yamaha saying that there's still a balance. I called them, asked them, "Is it our balance? We'll pay it." They said, "No, it's SG Management's balance." So, again, twenty months later.
Do you recover that 500 or so thousand dollars?
We did, we did. They, yeah, they took it out of our account and they replaced it within a day.
That spray rig is the only way that y'all can spray chemicals?
Excuse me?
That spray rig got broken, that's the only way free dollars sprayed chemicals?
For the chemicals, they bought are all liquid.
Okay.
There are other chemicals that we use, that we broadcast.
Okay.
So the timeframe that you had been without a sprayer apparently affected one, two, three, four...
The contract.
Five log entries that are on here attributed to the Divine Golf Group of using Harrows chemical.
So there was no other way for him to spray these?
No. He didn't have any, he didn't buy anything granular from Harrows.
No, man, could you have borrowed someone else's sprayer to spray? I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't, he could have, he could have, I don't know either.
So you know, Phil, he didn't use the Harrows during that time period?
I have no idea.
Okay.
So...
So that alone is almost $5,000 according to these, these figures here.
So, that's just, you know, all I want to say, just, you know, we're talking about this twenty months ago. He got out of this business twenty months ago, you know, and he's came up here and he said he took care of all his bills, took care of everything, handed in his keys, and didn't give us a inventory list. We didn't get an inventory list of everything we took over. We didn't get inventory list of equipment, chemicals, golf carts, we didn't get any list. The list you guys were reading from back in August was a list that Scott had with the city.
When he first took over him?
Yeah.
No, my mistake.
So, and again, I'm just trying to lay out, lay out the facts for you guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Tom, do you want me to reiterate that or do you want to...
The section that you cited is injured a secured creditor, and that's criminal offense, and the complaint would be Harrows, the fertilizer company.
Uh-huh. But, and y'all said that if they did sell the product to us, which is always still in question, it would be a civil fraud against us if we suffered damages, which we have...
We haven't done any of that.
Right, right.
Yeah.
In other words, if we were to vote on this to pay any of it, that would be civil damages and open up the potential for...
Maybe, maybe not, Josh.
Right, 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 it would have to be decided.
If we, if, then that hasn't been established yet, I don't know.
Lots of facts have not been established.
You knew the course, yeah.
Okay. That's a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Still saying, if indeed you used it on the course, okay, even though the city didn't know it was encumbered, okay, that there was an open invoice on it, and even though it didn't belong, okay, it was on the city property, but the mere fact of using it and spraying it on the course wouldn't make the city responsible?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Not necessarily. Because I still haven't heard where the council authorized that.
Yeah, well, it didn't, okay? It was not formally authorized, for sure, that, that's a given, okay? So, but what has been spoken is that three people admitted to be in talk, you know, testified that it was talked about in this building, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Excuse me.
That's why we've called in to question the integrity of the data provided to us as far as the spray records.
I also think there was something you requested last week that was to be provided this week.
Yeah, it was the, any evidence that it was authorized or requested. As Dora was saying, that she couldn't find any proof of that.
So SG Management's still responsible for everything that's owed from what Mr. Navarro said, that he was getting phone calls on, correct? The city's not responsible for this stuff?
Correct. He's, well, that's, that's the point of his motion here, or his agenda item is to request, we take the responsibility from SG Management.
Wow. How do you give somebody $32,000 a month to run a golf course and not pay bills?
I don't think that's the item we're talking about right now.
Still, how do you leave a, and you approved it? When they came, when they came with that contract, there was two yes, two no, and Alderman Valdez wasn't here, so it was a tie and break vote. So Mayor Thompson is the one that absolutely helped y'all out, give them that contract.
Okay, is that what we're talking about right now?
I was just about, just about to go there, it ties in a certain way.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we did give them 32,500 a month because they didn't have a clubhouse. That was part of the contract. Now, did they pay their bills? I don't know because I wasn't privy to their...
Well, there's three that I know of.
Well, you don't no-know that, you just know what...
You just told me!
I'm not saying, I'm not saying Arnold's lying, I'm saying he got phone calls, but we don't know, Scott might have taken care of it. know, Scott might have taken care of it. And there's a, uh, an accounting problem at that place, whatever place it was. I don't know. I can't say Scott didn't pay bills and I can't say he did. I'm kinda being Switzerland here for the minute.
Well, normally you know everything.
I never said I knew everything. Show me, since y'all want to be shown everything, show me, Michael.
Okay, hold on, hold on. What we need to do here, okay, is you speak, you speak, not in between. Secondly, and I'm, I'm actually starting to wonder, no offense, Mike, um, I'm not so sure this pertains to the agenda item.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, the contract, uh, was terminated, okay, and regardless of what was in the contract and everything, you know, well, that's a heck of a story, okay, obviously. But what we're dealing with here is, uh, this is after the contract was terminated. The city didn't have a relationship with SG Golf Management anymore. Okay? There was not a motion made by council with regards to all this. So what we need to decide is, uh, if indeed you wanna decide this evening, I, I did, okay, when I spoke with the, the rep from Harrells, he said, uh, there is no time deadline that was essentially suggested last week. Uh, he did however say it's Harrells' wish with regards to the finance charges that everything be taken care of at the same time. Okay? Uh, once again, as far as I'm concerned, if anyone disagrees with me, please say so. Uh, I think the only concern for the city, we have nothing to do with Divine Golf Group on this issue, uh, and the only thing of concern is, is what they, they, they say the city used. That's all we can rule on. We can't rule on Divine Golf Group has to pay anything, we can't rule on SG Golf Management has to pay anything to, to anyone. We can't even rule on, uh, in other words, we can't say SG Golf Management is not responsible for this because it doesn't pertain to us. Right? It pertains to SG Golf Management and, and Harrells, the vendor. Plain and simple. So what we have to decide is how do we want to address what they say the, the amount of the chemical is that we used? That's all we can do. That's what the agenda item says. Although it is a little bit vague, okay, but it does refer outstanding invoice and it does say Harrells. Alright? So let's, uh, proceed in that direction. Is, uh, can anything else be possibly said here with regards to what the city might be responsible for? Okay? Do we have any motions at this time? Agenda item closed, no action taken. Moving on. Item three, discuss and consider recommendation from the planning zoning commission for a meeting held on October 16th, 2023. Category A, requests made by Peggy Lester and Loretta Duke to be granted a waiver on the City of Divine subdivision ordinance on the meets and bounds for the 1.06 acres. The property is within the ETJ and is, and is located in 115 Littleton. Property's legal description is F. Period Nigley, survey number two, abstract number seven fourteen, Medina County, Texas. And what this is referring to is the, uh, first of all, it's in our ETJ, which, which basically means we have to approve the change. We don't have any power over them as far as, uh, city property or, or city taxes or anything like that. Okay? And this is over there by, uh, right next to the water tower by Water Stadium. Okay? So essentially, we just need to approve or, or not approve the planning zoning recommendation. Correct?
Correct. To grant the very.
Which was to grant the waiver?
Waiver, waiver.
Okay?
If you want to catch me on that. Stacy, it's your district judge.
Yes, I think if that's what P and Z recommends, then I will trust your judgment on that and say, let's go ahead and accept that recommendation for the waiver. Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation for a waiver on the City of Divine subdivision ordinance on the meets and bounds for the 1.06 acres. The property, uh, within ETJ and located at one, one five Littleton, um, owned by Peggy Lester and Loretta Duke. Is that good?
I think so. That's, that's to approve the waiver. Okay, we have a motion from Stacy to, uh, to approve the planning zoning recommendation, which is to approve the waiver. Any further discussion?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Debbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item four, discuss and consider adopting a resolution of the city council of the City of Divine, Texas, authorizing the City of Divine to submit a grant application to the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Office for a matching loan slash grant for the purchase of two police vehicles for the City of Divine and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute the grant agreement on behalf of the City of Divine.
At motion, we accept the, accept, uh, submission of the grant or we submit the grant?
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution.
Submit the grant.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
And that, uh, resolution number is ten dash twenty-three.
Okay, we have a resolution in a second to, uh, adopt the resolution ten dash twenty-three of the city council here of the City of Divine to the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Office for matching loan grant for the purchase of two police vehicles. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Informational items, anyone? I can, uh, the contract and everything is signed for the, uh, the purchase of the land by, uh, the water tower. And I will pick it up tomorrow from the school office and bring it to you, Dora. Okay? And then we can, uh, put everything in motion.
Are you ready?
Okay. Do we have anything on Pete, on the Bainwell?
No, sir, nothing yet. JR's still working on the plans on that.
Okay.
I mean, getting close to it though.
Got you, okay.
Pretty quick.
How are you doing on everything?
Everything's going good. We've been working on spotting for sagego internet on, um, Live Oak, so we have to mark all the lines anywhere they're gonna dig, so.
Oh, okay.
It's been going good. I seen it yesterday pass by. And then they're, they're gonna start over here on 1343 also, next door at Wells.
Okay, okay.
They're doing, uh, RISE internet.
And just to let y'all know, we did have an employee on Friday night on the job, a weed eater fell on his head and gashed it open. Um, Pete took him to the urgent care and he had to get six staples, but he's, he's okay. He's off right now.
Yeah, they gave him a week off.
He'll be going back Friday to take the staple off.
But everything should be good. Good news.
See, this is why I recommend hard hats when y'all are out there.
Well, you know, he was actually.
We need to wear your heart.
He was, you said he was putting it up, right?
He was putting the weed eater up when it fell, cause they go on the rack.
Oh, okay.
And it came down. They were done for the day and that happened, so.
Hey, when that happens.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's a good thing he's okay.
Anything on the, uh, uh, what street is it called, uh, the Walmart Street?
Oak.
Oak, yeah.
Oak Hill?
Yeah, it's, it's Oak Hill, right? Cause it eighteen. Yeah, eighteen widers are tearing it up.
Yeah.
I mean, I got nothing wrong, I mean, I have nothing against them parking or anything like that, but it's, I, I think when they laid that foundation down, they didn't lay enough asphalt for it.
That was actually discussed, uh, here, I believe it's been several months, but, uh, either that or I just, cause I had a couple people complain about it to me and, and I checked into it and, uh, however it happened, that the, the street which Walmart graciously gave to us to spend money on, maintain, um, wasn't done to code in the first place. To consider the, the kind of, uh, heavy traffic that it gets.
Yeah.
And hence therein lies the problem. However, it's quite some time ago, Walmart's been here for, what, how long have they been here, over ten years? Easy. Yeah, ten years, so we're stuck, guys. We got a street we gotta take care of so folks can drive to Walmart. So, is that it in a nutshell, Dora? Yeah?
Where are we at on the, uh, research into the airport and the cost of the grant we would have to repay when we sell that?
Well, I think that, uh, in text dot, they made a presentation on that. They said that, yes, if things got as bad as, as they could get, then they would do that. But they, they said, they told, uh, the meeting, right, that they don't have any memory of that ever happening. But the, the question is.
No, no. If we were to sell the airport.
Or to sell the airport.
How much would it cost us?
To pay the grants back?
Yeah, that's still, well, I don't have a total of those grants.
They sent us, they sent us a total, but our question to them, because they only showed our match, and it's not our match that we would pay, we'd have to pay back like the total actual grant. And I, um, I wanna say, they did send me a spreadsheet. We're gonna, uh, Denise and I are gonna be working on that to show exactly for each grant, like it was six hundred thousand, that's what we'd have to pay back. So we have to go back for the twenty years, um, let's say council decided to sell it this year, next year. We go back and then figure out that total and we can bring it to you.
When can we expect that?
Um, we can have it for the November regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, there's also a light out, a street light in front of Divine Bean Company.
In front of what?
Divine Bean Company.
There's a street light out?
Yeah.
Uh, Pete, do y'all have any update on a new building?
Uh, no, we were supposed to, we, we have to call that the lady that, the modular company. I know that we're working on it still. They, they had to redo the inside to fit for all of the inside, so.
Perfect, alright.
Should we get any proposals back yet for the three dingers at the airport?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I have them right here, can I pass them on?
Yep.
Cool.
Yes.
Did you ever take care of those installation of the lights?
Yeah, she has one, one electrical box to do and he should be done.
Was that the change order?
Start writing it next month.
Yeah.
Thirty, sixty thousand dollars. We need more bids. Did we, uh, did we request this per se, these items, or did they just?
This is what he went through and.
That's what they are recommending?
Right.
Okay.
Um, he say you can pick and choose which I wanna do with the bill.
Gotcha, okay. We might have to have an agenda item on this, guys.
Is this the only, the only bid that we got?
Yes, that's the only one I've had so far.
Okay.
The other ones, yeah.
Alright, any other informational items?
Yes.
Okay.
It has been brought to my attention that we've got, uh, quite a few of our police officers in a, uh, tough financial position. So, I know we're out of budget season, but I would ask, uh, I would, I would put out in an informational manner, uh, that it would be a good idea to, uh, think through, uh, brainstorming s- uh, some solutions to, uh, make Divine a little bit more appetizing to those folks so that we'd, uh, cease losing them to higher paying jobs in the county, state, DHS, et cetera.
Uh, that could be an agenda item. Whatever.
Maybe a workshop. I don't necessarily have any good ideas, I just.
Okay, alright.
We don't wanna lose anymore.
We, uh, okay, we've lost one more recently, correct, Dora?
Um, we have, right now, we're still vacant that one and then, um, the other one, uh, at the end of this month.
What are we down to?
And then we have one that's gonna be going on, uh, he's gonna have surgery. And then we don't know about the, uh, the fourth one, if, um, if, um, we just, the department has just heard that another one may be leaving, but nothing's been turned in, you know, resignation or anything like that's been turned in.
And they're going to the county?
The one that's leaving at the end of the month is going to the sheriff's department, yes.
How, how many have we lost to the sheriff's department recently?
We have at, uh.
That's the only one?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay.
So we're out of ten, eleven?
Three. One's going to surgery, one's not leaving, leaving.
Alright, guys.
And you're overtime.
One more, one more thing.
Okay, Stacy, go ahead.
Fun thing, um, the library's having their annual pumpkin decorating party and y'all can stop by and see all the cute little pumpkins and boats. Um, they're so cute this year, yeah, I mean, they're good every year, but like this year exceptionally, so please stop by and do so, cause it's, um, it's, first of all, it's all ages, so you get to see like some really cool stuff, so please be sure to stop by and vote.
And then, uh.
Very creative.
Another informational item with regards to the parade float and everything, uh, I will not be here for the fall festival. I'll be out of state, but I'd be more than glad to try and help if you guys are getting together sometime, let me know. And I'll, I'll do whatever I possibly can before I leave. I leave on, um, that Friday, actually before, and I come back on, uh, Tuesday, the following Tuesday.
We're getting together on Wednesday, November 1st to decorate.
Okay. Let me write that down, I'll try to.
I sure hope it don't rain that day.
Can, can you set space with me later?
Well, all week.
Okay, please do.
Hopefully it rains all this week and not next week for the festival.
But it'll be inside, you know?
But the parade Saturday, that's what I'm worried about and everything else that these girls are going, these ladies are going to, the Chamber of Commerce.
The last couple, it like rained in the morning.
Mornings, but it stops, yes.
The parade starts. Then we were good.
So hopefully we'll have that good fortune.
Alright, do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
You're up, John.
Trying to get you a warm up.